Our TV, pardon the delay, our TV is out, so we are gonna wait for about five more minutes to get it up and running. TV broadcast.
Yes.
You guys aren't watching the TV, obviously. Pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska statutes, the next meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District 0001 and the Board of Educational Service Unit Number 19 will be held on March 19, 2018 at 6:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room of the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cummings Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 841412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Board Meeting Room on the North Wall. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Vice President America will lead us in the OPS Vision and Mission Statement.
All right, first we'll do our vision. Every student, every day, prepared for success. And our mission, Omaha Public Schools prepares all students to excel in college career and life.
Thank you, Ms. America. Mr. Scanlon and Ms. Gaudin will not, will be running late due to prior work conflicts. Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Cassidy.
Here.
Holman.
Here.
America.
Present.
Pearlman.
Here.
Ryan.
Present.
Scanlon.
Smith.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Seven present.
Moving on to, moving on to the treasure report.
I'd like to submit for you review the financial statements for the period ending January 31, 2018.
Thank you, Connie. Also, I'll entertain a motion to excuse Mr. Scanlon and Ms. Gaudin.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion by Dr. Holman, second by Ms. Ryan. Roll call. Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Seven aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to Superintendent. Report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of items. One, I just wanted the Board to be aware that we're now in the midst of trying to set up some of our community meetings in reference to the Phase Two bond issue, and just wanted to again thank the Board for the support of that, and just let you know that we're looking at, our first one may be the 156 and Ida site. We've had community members there ask for a meeting on a Saturday, which we are more than happy to do so we can share what the project is, what the project isn't, and get all the appropriate players. But as we get those dates set, we'll work with the Board to make sure you know when those dates are, and certainly any, any that are in your sub-district, we want to make sure you're, if possible, available, so we'll try to work with your calendars and schedule accordingly as well, just so that your, your sub-district knows what we're working on. The next thing I wanted to mention was that we are working still with the Budget Advisory Group, and in our next meeting, our first two meetings have really been more about education. We've learned where our funding sources come from, we've learned how the budget has developed, we've gone through all the intricacies of state, state formula, federal formulas, requirements and rules that go with it. Our next meeting, the Budget Advisory Group is gonna be actually starting to look at different areas where those reductions could come from, that will obviously be needed to pay our ARC, which is the annual required contribution for OSERS, to meet our unfunded liability. So we'll, we'll have that happening, and we've got four Board members that serve on that, that group, but I also want the whole Board to know that there's community members, there's district, district leadership, there's union members from the teachers' union, as well as our classified union, but we will be looking at department, district level department cuts, we will be looking at areas such as, one of the things that we plan to bring back to the Board fairly soon, unfortunately, right now, because of the CEP and the way it's counted at the state level, and Ms. Kanoki's been working really hard on it, one of the things that we talked about with Budget Advisory is that we're losing $6 million, and they are making a recommendation that we take that back to the Board to re-up the old practice or the previous practice and move away from CEP for six schools, because it's actually causing a loss of resources, which none of us want, and certainly, we're all disappointed on how the CEP has worked, that's that community eligibility plan in reference to those six schools where they don't fill out the free and reduce form, but the way the state counts it, I believe, Ms. Kanoki, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we lost 650 count students for the free and reduce, which is causing us to lose funding from the state level, and I know I've seen a multitude of emails with you and the Commissioner of Ed, and I've certainly been in conversation, it just doesn't look like we're gonna be able to move forward in that regard. And finally, I would just say that the Budget Advisory Group said in our last meeting, they wanna look for cuts as far away from the classroom as possible, which I'm not surprised. So we're gonna continue looking at all of those pieces and bringing those back, so you'll hear more as the committee process and cuts begin to move forward, because as you know, we're looking at a need for $15.8 million for the OSERS contribution this year. That's on top of the 12.8 that we did in September of this year, so, and I know we're gonna talk more about OSERS later, so I'll stop at that, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. We'll move back up to Item F. Ms. Monique Farmer? School Spotlight.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board, Superintendent Evans. Tonight, our OPS Proud Spotlight is on Beverage Magnet Middle School. The 18th African-American History Challenge took place on Saturday, February 3, at North High Magnet School. The History Challenge is a collaboration between 100 Black Men of Omaha and the Omaha Public Schools. This year's winners were Beverage Magnet Middle School in the junior division, Alfonso, Alfonso Davis Middle School and Morton Magnet School earned second and third place. In the senior division, South High School and Burke High School earned second and third place. Creighton Prep earned first place. We congratulate all of the students who participated, and this evening, we would like to recognize here in person the Beverage Magnet Junior Division Champions, Israel Bryant, Emma Cecil Starlin, Elena Elder, Ayana Candido, and their coaches, Sheila McCauley and Melissa Hoilman. This is the third year in a row that Beverage Magnet students have won the competition. They will compete at Nationals, which will take place in Hollywood, Florida in June. I'd now like to welcome Principal Dr. David Lavender to the podium for some brief remarks.
Thank you, Ms. Farmer, and just like to say thank you for allowing us to come tonight and showcase our wonderful students from Beverage Magnet School. You know, winning is about as contagious as the talk of a snow day, and this process has been going on at Beverage for a long time. I see Tina Forte, my cousin over there, who was at the heart of the beginning of this, and yeah, we may have won it the last three times or five or so, and maybe about half of the time or more. But it isn't because they wake up knowing all of the information in the books that we use as our texts. They spend literally hours studying and learning, and the value is such that our whole school revels in this kind of an award, so it has a positive impact on the school, it has a positive impact on these kids, and we hope it has a positive impact on the community. Thank you very much. And now, I'd just like to present the team and the coaches.
Welcome.
Hello, I'm Elena Elder.
I'm Israel Bryant.
I'm Emma Cecil Starlin.
I'm Ayana Candido.
I'm Melissa Hoilman.
Good evening, I'm Sheila McCauley, and I'm one of the coaches.
Good evening, Michaela Jackson, Assistant Principal at Beverage.
Awesome, so you could talk about the challenge and your experiences, and how many years you've been part of the team, or if it's your first year on the team, and...
Okay, so, this is my first year, and yeah, it's all of our first years. She's in seventh grade, so we're recruiting her for next year, and it was kinda challenging, and because we're all friends, we could make sure we actually practiced by friendly threats. Oh, and we created Quizlets, which did take a lot of time, and a lot of... Yeah, they're like flashcards online, and so, yeah.
Awesome.
It was definitely a lot of extra time outside of school to study, but it was definitely worth it, because it really adds to your education inside school as well, especially in social studies, but also in language arts and other classes. What you hear in the class really, you can connect it to what you've learned outside of class, which is nice.
We all have spent a lot of time studying in many hours, like Dr. Lavender said, so it was very time-consuming, but it was all very important that we did, because it really helped our growth in school and in our academic success.
The, the coaches, do you guys have...
Well, we just assure you that next year, we'll be coming back with the national championship trophy, as well as the local championship.
And when is the national championship?
Hollywood, Florida, this summer. When are we going?
June 30.
Oh, my goodness. It's amazing. College... Do you guys have, colleagues, do you guys have any questions?
Are you guys going to the same high school to keep the team together?
No.
Also, no, no high school championship?
No, I wanna go to boarding school, so it's kinda putting me kinda far away from Nebraska, yeah.
I'm moving out of the, I'm moving out of the state, so I can't really compete in OPS.
I'm going to Central, but I'm gonna do History Day next year, so it kinda overlaps, so, yeah.
Well, thank you guys so much. Show that trophy high and proud. If you guys could give these lovely ladies a round of applause again for all the hard work they've done. And if we can stand right here in the middle and take some photos. If you can go around and shake every Board member's hand, if you would like. It's always amazing to see what students do outside of school to continue their education and learn about history of our culture and community. Moving on to Item G3, Board Members. Ms. Ryan.
Ms. America's very excited for me to say this. This week, or last week was Read Across America Week, and I was invited to read to second graders at Beals, and even though it was just Dr. Seuss and it was Green Eggs and Ham, I still got really nervous, but it was really fun, and I enjoyed it, and any other schools that would like to invite us to read to their students would probably be greatly appreciated.
Mr. Pearlman.
Thank you. I actually had the opportunity to eat green eggs and ham this week for Read Across. At my daughter's school, they were serving it, and I wanted to give public recognition of the, the food services, nutrition services, because I sent an email out earlier, it was, it was just great food, and so, I know sometimes it's an area that gets criticized, but I stopped in unannounced, and the food was just, it was amazing, so I just wanna give a shout out there. I also had an opportunity when OPS, OPS did not have a snow day, it's probably been a week, but Sarpy County, where I work, did have a snow day, so I had a chance to drive out to a couple of schools, and it was, it was a borderline day, and, but went to Rosehill and Edison, had a great visit with their principal and their staff there, got to get a preview of some of the construction that is anticipated at Edison, and so, it was a great opportunity to see those schools and what's going on there, so it was a good time, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Cassidy.
This past Friday, I can't say that I attended, I actually worked at this event. My, one of my middle daughters goes to Gomez Heritage, and they did their first annual, this was like the cutest thing I've ever seen, they did their first annual daddy-daughter dance, and I would encourage any school, I know there's a few schools I've heard of that do this, but any school that is looking for just a really easy way to get their students involved and to kinda get parent participation up, it was a great event. Just seeing all these little girls, I mean, some of them came in with tiaras on their heads, and I mean, some of them just almost looked like they were going to prom. It was kinda crazy, but any, I guess it was any male role model, so mostly dads were there, but you saw a lot of grandparents and uncles, brothers, even some older brothers, so it was just a really fun event to watch, and great, great to watch all the positive role models light up these little girls' knights and their, and their faces, so, just kind of a fun event.
Thank you. Ms. America.
On Friday, I was also able to go read at Beals to a group of kindergartners, and we did Oh, Say Can You Say, which if you're not familiar with, is a Dr. Seuss book of tongue twisters. So that was a lot of fun, helping them figure out what things were alike and words that rhymed and sounded, sounded the same. And then I also want to give a shout out and wish good luck to our Bryan Bears and our Central Eagles, who will be competing in the Boise State Basketball Tournament later this week.
Thank you. Mr. Smith.
Friendly competition down there. I've had a chance to actually go visit Belvedere this past week and walk through the school and meet some of the teachers, sit in some of the classrooms for a little while and just kind of observe, and the kids were really doing some great things, some dynamic things with math, I was really, really impressed. Also, had a chance to speak to students at Nathan Hale in collaboration with you, so we had a really good time, actually ended up staying an extra class period to talk with some eighth graders just about career and success and what they can do to be successful. And this Saturday, I was able to attend the state powerlifting meet, which is a dynamic sport, a lot of really, really good competition, both male and female, our kids really did great, and the host was Omaha South High School, and Mr. Bastid is, he works in the district, he does a good job at putting that on, and for the first year, he decided to have a Hall of Fame, and he inducted a young lady, Courtney Young, who's a Central student, and she'll be the first one inducted to that Hall of Fame. She set state power meet records with, I wanna say she did a 400-pound squat right after coming from UNO doing a distinguished scholar interview, so she did some, some great things on Saturday.
That is, that is a lot of weight. Thank you, Board Members. Moving on to, the next item on the agenda is public comment. We have five speakers who have submitted request to speak forms. The Board has adopted Policy 8346, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. That same policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect that time limit. Mr. Ray will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have 30 seconds remaining. If you are needy of an interpreter, please let Mr. Ray know, and one will be provided for you. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you do not mention the student or staff member by name, and instead provide that information to Mr. Ray. He will assist us in looking into those types of details for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and would like to submit any written commentary, please provide it to Mr. Ray. He will make sure each Board member gets a copy. As a reminder, we ask that you please spell your name, state... spell your name, state your address, and before you begin your public comment. It is now 7:00 PM. Our first speaker is Emily Holtzclaw.
Good evening. My name's Emily Holtzclaw. That's E-M-I-L-Y-H-O-L-T-Z-C-L-A-W from 5005 Chicago Street. My husband and I, my husband David and I, have three children currently attending Omaha Public Schools. I'd like to draw your attention tonight to current legislative bill LB 1052, which will require instruction and teacher education related to dyslexia. This bill is currently in the Education Committee in Lincoln and needs your support to be brought to the floor for debate and passage in 2018. My third grade son, Christopher, who is dyslexic, joined my eighth grade daughter, husband and I, as we testified to the Education Committee on February 13th in support of LB 1052. Twenty other speakers supported this bill at that same hearing, ranging from other parents of dyslexic children, dyslexic adults, and representatives of notable Nebraska educational and professional organizations such as the Board of Education, State Education Association, Council of School Administrators Association of Special Ed Supervisors, and Speech Language and Hearing Association. There were no opponents that spoke that day at the hearing, and in fact, Westside Public Schools, Malcolm Public Schools, and Millard Public Schools all provided letters of support for the bill. Lincoln, Wahoo, and others have committed their support to this bill as well. I am here tonight to ask you to use OPS's leadership as the largest public school district in Nebraska and your authority as elected officials to take a stance in support of this critical legislation. In a nutshell, this bill will include teacher awareness of an existing technical assistance guidance document for dyslexia, universal reading screening to include risk factors for dyslexia, and teacher certification and training requirements. Why is this bill important to pass this year? It is critical because it supports the foundational purpose of public education, literacy, the ability to spell, write, and read fluently. Passage of LB 1052 will also help bring Nebraska an important step closer to being on par with other states who have very similar dyslexia legislation on the books and they've had it for decades. What is dyslexia? In Nebraska, it is listed as specific learning disability. It is a genetic neurological condition. We're about 15% to 20% of all people, regardless of race, gender, culture, or language, do not have the brain hardwiring to decode the written word easily. Almost one in five people we all know are dyslexic, and you may not be aware of it because many of them are undiagnosed. Many dyslexic people are very intelligent. They find ways to compensate for their decoding difficulties by being creative in other aspects of their brain function. It is a very difficult way to get through school, though, if you are dyslexic. Dyslexic students are four times more likely to drop out of high school than proficient readers. The adults and children that you know that struggle with reading may very well be dyslexic, but you may be unaware of it because they are undiagnosed. Teacher colleges in Nebraska do not train all teachers to identify dyslexia, nor do these colleges train teachers the methods to teach dyslexic kids how to read, spell, and write fluently. LB 1052 will address these issues. I am not here to be critical of teachers. I am here to empower teachers with the tools to help their struggling readers and help them get access to the resources they need to so that they can help their students read as much as they need, as they want to. Will LB 1052 make a difference? Yes. A wealth of scientific literature supports what my son Christopher experienced personally over the last three months of receiving instruction using the methods required in LB 1052. After these three months of this instruction, his math test scores in reading went up 24 percentile points, his math scores went up 32 percentile points, and his science score went up 36 percentile points. Keep in mind that a typical expectation for a special ed student is a four to five percentile increase. His spelling grade went from an F to an A. His overall reading/writing grade went from a C to an A. His confidence has improved.
One minute.
His interaction with peers has improved and his anxiety has decreased. This is all because he has improved his literacy. Will this bill cost the district money? In the short term, yes. There will be some additional training costs, but if we do not, we do not invest in this endeavor of education for the short term, do we? Dyslexia is the most common learning disability, and there is proven research that shows that with early intervention, students can be helped.
Thirty seconds.
So, I have provided my written testimony to you all, so you can read it at your leisure, but in short, I appreciate the Omaha Public School District's support of this bill, along with the other leading school districts in the state. I am open to answering any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. Mr. Ray will get us those details. He passed out your papers, and then we'll go from there.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Rebecca Miller.
Good evening, President Snow, the members of the board, and Superintendent Evans. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you this evening. I am a resident of Sub-District Nine. My address is 1015 Marcy Plaza. It is Rebecca, R-E-B-E-C-C-A, Miller, M-I-L-L-E-R. I too am here in support of LB 1052, a bill that will allow children with dyslexia to access the interventions they need to read, write, and spell. Currently, I am the owner and managing director of Dyslexia Clinic, dedicated to working with children. With dyslexia, we provide clinical evaluation and intervention. One of the things I really wanted to talk to you about today is there are many, many misconceptions about what dyslexia is and what it isn't. And in the last 15 years or so, I have been an educational consultant. I have worked with six local area districts, not necessarily related to dyslexia, but several issues, some. I have contracted with Department of Health and Human Services, Juvenile probation, and in that time, a tutoring company I own served more than 3,200 kids in the Omaha metro area. Dyslexia is real despite what people may think. It is neurobiological in nature, yet there are many, many myths that are prevalent in our educational community and in the public at large. First of all, dyslexia is not a vision-based disability. It is a disability in the phonological processing, which in simple terms, what that is, is if you have, let's say you have the word cat. Cat is one syllable, but cat has three separate sounds, k, a, and t, right? Individuals with dyslexia have difficulty, not hearing, but discriminating those minute sounds. When you have difficulty discriminating those sounds, that flows up to your reading, and that also flows up to your spelling. It is neurobiological in nature. If you are a parent that has dyslexia, you have a 50% chance that your child will too have dyslexia. I think what is most important, I think, to really get across is in our clinic, we use evidence-based instruction, and we see marked improvement in reading, writing, and spelling. And I too believe there are many, many great teachers in Omaha Public Schools, many teachers who have called us, how can we help these kids? What can we do? The resources are not available. And when you look at the prevalence rates, you're looking at 13% to 17% of the general population. When you look at that in numbers of special education students, okay, there's 13 categories of disability, one of those disability categories being a specific learning disability. In the definition, of which I did include in your package, of a specific learning disability includes the word dyslexia, that terminology is the same terminology that has been around since 1975, okay? It's not new. What would be new is if we actually specifically addressed that. And the reason I bring that to your attention is I have heard more times than I care to admit, dyslexia is not real, okay? And it is real. And when you're looking at why these kids are not progressing in reading, while I would not say it's every single time, certainly dyslexia, the research says 80% of kids that are receiving special education services in the area of a specific learning disability likely have dyslexia. And as Mrs. Holtzclaw mentioned, there's zero teacher training for it in the...
One minute.
...higher ed area. The other thing is early intervention is best. We do know that first grade reading ability is strongly correlated with eighth and 11th grade. It is in these early years. So I too ask for your support. As a member of this district, as a member of this community, we need to do something for these children. Please support this. And the other thing I would also ask is...
Thirty seconds.
Please, 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 within your power, on the Omaha Public School website, include the technical assistance document for dyslexia. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Callan Maher.
Hello, I am Callan Maher, C-A-L-L-A-N-M-A-H-E-R. I live at 115 South 52nd Street. I am an eighth grader at Beveridge-Meggitt Middle School, and I was diagnosed with dyslexia when I was in third grade. Being a third grader, I didn't fully understand what it meant to be dyslexic. I just knew for the first time it meant I wasn't just stupid. Before I was diagnosed, that's how I felt, stupid. I didn't, I liked school in the beginning, but I quickly changed. No matter how hard I tried, I couldn't figure out how to read. Each teacher kept telling my parents that I'd catch up. I'd cry every night during reading time, and I'd had a lot of anxiety about school. I never read books for fun because it was never fun. I was laughed at by other kids, and it was the worst feeling ever, knowing that you would not understand, and no one understood you. My hope is that this bill is passed so no other kids have to go through what I did. They don't have to feel stupid and be made fun of, and they can live in a much, and they can learn in a much better environment. Because teachers need to learn how to help kids with dyslexia and teach them different than the other kids. This bill can change the lives of children and give them the hope that I didn't have until I was in third grade. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Robert Miller.
Good evening. Robert Miller, R-O-B-E-R-T-M-I-L-L-E-R, 7301 North 107th Avenue, Omaha, 68122. Good evening, Mr. President Snow, Vice President Merrick, Superintendent Evans, and Board Members. I would want to, I want to thank the OPS Board and the negotiations team for the working together and the recent bargaining with the OEA. The challenges we faced were met by listening with an open mind, as each side discussed its needs and desires as we worked to best serve our students in OPS. While there were some successes, some disappointments, for each team, our differences were handled in a respectful and professional manner. The tentative agreement was presented to the OEA members, with our team providing answers to the questions posed by our members. After those discussions, the members were given a week to vote on the tentative agreement. The agreement was ratified by 61.78% to 38.22% vote. The OEA stands in solidarity with the visions of OPS with a small addition: Every student, every day, prepared for success, because we make it happen. Again, thank you for your time, and we look forward to continue working with you as we educate the 52,000 students of our district.
Thank you so much. Our last speaker is Crystal Craig.
Hello. My name's Crystal Craig, K-R-Y-S-T-L-E-C-R-A-I-G, and I live at 3521 Haskell Street here in Omaha. I'm a parent of four children, and three of them are in OPS. And I came here to, I wanted to start a conversation about security and safety for the children in light of the recent acts of violence that seem to increase around the nation. I wanted to know what are any plans or talks or implementations that you guys are planning or discussing for increasing security in the schools, for mental health care screenings? I know this is a really loaded question and issue, but I wanted to, I wanted to see about getting the ball rolling on something. You know, I'd like to rather, I'd rather be on the offensive than defensive on this. Thankfully, we've not had, you know, these horrific things happen to us in Omaha, but I mean, it certainly is within the realm of possibility, you know, and we're rapidly growing, and the population is increasing. So I'm not quite sure who my personal representative is. I was hoping that a friend would be here as well who shares the same concerns, but she's unfortunately ill today. So if, I don't know if you can give me any kind of answers right now, if you can direct me to a specific person that I should be...
Typically, for public comment, the board doesn't respond to public comment, but you can present your question to Mr. Ray. We do have a resolution on the agenda that the board will be discussing, but to your direct question there, if you can give that to Mr. Ray, and he can get back to you on that.
Okay. So then I suppose my comment is a voice, just a concern on the issue.
The resolution is on the agenda tonight, so...
Excellent.
It's right after this.
I have to get done talking. Okay, I'll shut up.
You're good.
Get some listening. Thanks.
Thank you so much. And I think Mr. Ray wrote down your question as well.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to item I, Consent Agenda. I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
So moved.
Second. With a motion by Ms. Merrick and a second by Mr. Smith. Any abstentions? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Cassidy?
Aye.
Hallman?
Aye.
Merrick?
Aye.
Perman?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
And Snow?
Aye, sorry.
Oh, that's right. Eight aye. Motion carries. Moving on to action items. Let me remind, scrolling here, J1A and J1B, we're going to flip those, and we're actually going to discuss the resolution relating to school shootings in the United States first, and then we'll do the update on OSERS and other legislative issues. And we'll begin with Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. The resolution in front of you is similar to a resolution that many districts across the United States of America are putting into place in relationship, actually, to some of the concerns we just heard tonight and how we are reacting to some of those concerns of violence in our schools. And as you look at the resolution, you'll see that there is a statement in there where we're asking the school board to not look at the answer for this violence in adding more guns to our schools by arming our teachers or principals or superintendents, but there are other ways, which is part of what we had. I had a brief discussion last board meeting about, we're doing a monthly, or monthly, excuse me, a weekly meeting now with our crisis team. We're reviewing all the crisis efforts that are being done and active shooting efforts at all of our schools. So we've really heightened our awareness. I think we're all concerned about what happened in Florida, and deservedly so. We should be. I would also say that I feel fortunate that this board passed a bond resolution that allowed us to put card readers in all of our schools and video entrance restrictions. And not all of them are quite in place yet, but we're getting very close now, about 85%. And those are going to be helpful, but it's not enough. There's still threat assessments, there's still mental health issues, there's a whole litany of issues that I think in the near future, we might want to come back to the board with a full piece. But the resolution is something that will be helpful as we work with our legislators, who in some ways are looking for what I would say is a simple answer for a very complex problem. And so I'm thankful that the board was willing to con...
I just think this is something, a public statement that we really need to make, in light of everything that's happened. And when I found out about Florida, the one thing that I thought was, we failed our kids again, as a society. Not necessarily OPS, or Omaha, or anything specific, but just as a society, we've failed again. And I am hopeful with the energy that these kids are showing, and I'm just, I get emotional about it, but it's just because, like, I see so much hope in them, and it's, it's a shame that it's because of something so tragic. But I'm in support of this resolution, and furthering our efforts, so.
Mr. Pearlman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also am strongly in support of this, and this is something that can't be fixed with an easy, there's no easy fix to this, but I would urge any lawmaker in Nebraska to really take seriously the absolute gutting of mental health services for young people over the past 10 to 20 years in Nebraska. It's no panacea, but it's definitely something that impacts these types of situations. You know, where I work, every single day, there are calls for people to be involuntarily committed, and there's no room for these people. And, you know, when we talk about police officers being called back in Florida to someone's residence dozens of times, and I don't know the particulars of it, but the system nationwide, and even in Nebraska, is completely overwhelmed. We need support from the state, from the governor, from the lawmakers in Lincoln. It's a long-term solution, but continuing to cut year after year, mental health services has an effect. And it's not a direct effect, but there's absolutely no doubt between the connection of reduction in mental health services for young people, and an increase in crime. So, that, that whole attitude needs to change. And until it does, that part of the solution, it's, it's something that is one of the most important parts of addressing this issue. So, again, I urge any lawmaker in Lincoln to support mental health services for young people, and do all they can to support the frontline law enforcement, and doctors and nurses who treat these people every day.
Thank you, Mr. Pearlman. Ms. America.
Well, I, I wasn't planning on talking tonight, but this is, if you know me, this is something that's near and dear to my heart, because, like Ms. Ryan said, when we first heard about the school shooting in Florida, my first thought was of the students, and knowing exactly what they went through, because I went through that in Omaha in 2007, and sending text messages, and making phone calls, and just knowing, like, what's going through their heads. So I am very much in support of this bill, and in support of not arming our teachers, because our teachers have told us, that's not what they want, and that's not, not what's going to solve the problem. And I do want to thank Mr. Evans, he and, I think, all the metro area superintendents met with Congressman Bacon, and it sounds like changed his opinion on that issue, based on the feedback and input that they shared with him. To give you all a little bit more backstory on the resolution as well, it is modeled off of a resolution from Council of Great City Schools, that they are going to be discussing and voting on at their board meeting in a couple of weeks in Washington DC, that they will then, I would assume that will pass there as well, but they will then be presenting that to members of all the federal delegations for the member districts, as well as our country's administration. So I think this is showing our support for, something has to be done. There is not a quick solution, but there are a lot of little things that we can do along the way to get us in the right direction.
Thank you, Ms. America. Mr. Smith.
I also strongly support the resolution. I want to say that it's, it's an opportunity for us to really come together as a community to make sure that we are doing the best we possibly can for our students. Also, we have to keep in mind that those teachers and those educators who come in every single day, that's an additional burden that they shouldn't have to have in arming themselves. As a district, I think we are making the right decisions, and doing good work in keeping our kids safe. The improvements, the things that are going to be on the bond to help security, I think those are things that are going to definitely help be a solution versus the problems we have with mental health and those kind of things. I think we also need to address post-traumatic stress, and the things that these kids will go through later on. They're going to graduate, and they're going to be on a college campus, and it's just as many dangers on a college campus, so those are things that we need to keep in mind as well, as not just the short-term, the quick fixes, or the mental health counselors who come to the schools for a couple of days, and then those kids don't get those resources anymore. So, that, that long-term effect is something that we also have to be mindful of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other discussion? We'll now entertain a motion. For which would be item J1A.
I move we approve the resolution related to school shootings in the United States.
Second.
With a motion by Ms. America, second by Dr. Holman. Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Holman.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Eight aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Moving on to item J1B, which is the update on OSERS and other legislative issues, probably give Mr. Evans and his team probably two minutes to get to the podium.
While, while they're moving to the podium, I want to start out with saying that the challenge that we're talking about tonight is something we've been talking about for quite a while. The unfunded liability has been growing for several years, as our investment returns have been going down. In fact, the returns went down to the extent that we went from an 8 percent assumption rate on our OSERS pension plan, to a 7.5 percent assumption rate, of which, in the last five years, we really haven't, in many of those years, hit the 7.5 either, although this year, it's doing better. So we've got investment returns that haven't panned out as well, and as a result, we now have our investments handled by Nebraska Investment Council, as of approximately a year ago, and as I mentioned, we actually are seeing a better year this year. But because of some of the loss of investment returns, we're now looking at the next 30-year period of having approximately an $882 million deficit over the next 30 years. That's beyond the district's 101 percent contribution to the OSERS plan. And by that, I mean, every employee pays 9.78 percent of their paycheck to OSERS, and the district matches that, 101, which is 9.88. And then on top of that, we're still going to need to add in additional, what's called ARCs, annual required contributions. In fact, in September of this year, we put in 12.8 million, and you're going to see a whole list of where those actuarial needs are in the future. And tonight, we have several experts, that I think, one of the things we've talked about at the board table, is we want to hear from the experts. We're going to have our actuary, Pat Beckham from Kavanaugh-McDonald, who also is responsible for the actuarial work with the state pension plan, is with us tonight. We've got John Lindsay, who's our legislative lobbyist, who's working on a bill to help us with this challenge. We have Connie Kanoki here, and we have Bruce Lefler from Ameritas to talk about how a potential bond, pension obligation bond, could help resolve this challenge we have in front of us. And so, we're going to be walking through each part and piece of that, to help give the board better clarification, to help give the board a better understanding of where we are, and how this obligation bond will help move us down the road. And I understand that this is something that's not an easy conversation to have, because obviously, all of us wish we didn't have an unfunded liability. All of us wish that we weren't having to, as a district, have a budget advisory committee that currently is looking for $15.8 million in cuts, to meet the OSERS obligation. No one likes that, but that is where we're at. That is where we're at. And so, tonight, we're going to talk about some potential, potential ways to move beyond this, in a way that's more predictable for the district, in a way that, that we believe will allow us to move forward in a productive fashion. I also want to point out, the Nebraska Investment Council, the head investment person is Michael Walden Newman, who presented to the school board about a month and a half ago, and I wanted to share with you, he wasn't able to be here tonight, but I did hand out, you should have at your plate, Mr. Ray, did you hand these out? Okay. You should have an example of an email that describes what Mr. Walden Newman suggests that he would do, should our school board, should our legislators, accept the opportunity for a pension obligation bond. And I wanted to point that out, because it shows the asset allocation, so that you all understand how he would break it up, and how the Nebraska Investment Council, which by the way, has had some success, and INPERS is funded at approximately 84 percent because of their investment returns, versus OSERS, which is funded at approximately 64 percent. So I wanted you to be aware of that asset allocation that he describes there. I wanted you to be aware of his belief that they're looking at a long-term assumption rate of at least 6.6 percent. So that's in this document from him as well. And we also handed out earlier, an example of another state, and another state's pension obligation bond, you should have at your seat, and I believe this was loaded on the board information as well. This is an example of pension obligation bonds that were used for CAPERS, Kansas Public Employees Retirement System. So it gives a pretty good example of another situation where the same instrument was used to have success, and they have had success with their pension obligation bond, where the difference between the cost of the bond, and the interest gained on the investments is actually on the positive side. So with that, I think tonight, we want to walk through some of the details with you, and we want to start out with a discussion about the legislative bill that we have in front of our legislators and senators, and including the retirement board. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to John Lindsay, and then we'll answer questions throughout, so please don't, don't hesitate as we move through it. Mr. Lindsay.
Thank you. Going through the, the slides that I think you may have in front of you, or up on the board, I want to go over first what, what current law is, what you're facing if nothing happens, if, if no, no change is made, what the, what faces OPS. Right now, OPS is required by statute to make actuarially required contributions. Those are contributions over and above the 101 percent match that, that OPS makes right now for its employees. In September, this past September, OPS paid $12.8 million in actuarially required contribution. Under current projections, that number will increase to $18.7 million, that'll be due this fall or late summer, to $21.3 million in 2019, $23.5 million in 2020, $25.3 million in 2021, and $26.9 million in 2022. I believe that goes up as high as 40, almost $46 million in 2041. So it's an upward, very much an upward movement in that arc. You pay, OPS pays those ARCs from its general fund. That is, it pays those ARCs from funds that are subject to the dollar-five levy. AM 1529 is the first of the amendments. It was introduced by Senator Lindstrom. It would provide that the OPS Board could issue pension obligation bonds. Those bonds would be under the dollar-five levy, just like the ARC is. They would be paid under, under that general fund levy. Since they are subject to, or they're repaid with general funds, and subject to the levy limit, the bonds could be issued under this proposal without a vote of the people. The rationale for that is that the board is not asking the people to pay any other dollar, or any additional dollars. It is, it is asking that the funds be, the bonds be repaid in the same manner that the ARC would be paid, if no other action was, was being taken. No additional property taxes could be levered, thank you, no additional property taxes, you would have no, no additional property taxing authority under this proposal. There were, in the original, if you went online and looked at the amendment, there were a couple of provisions that have been deleted. One was to allow a portion of the repayment to be made with a levy that would exceed that limit. That portion has been removed from the proposal, as has a look-back period that was also drawing some opposition from INPERS. AM 1758 is, is the, I believe, third in a series of amendments proposed by Senator Coulterman. There is a, there's been a misconception at the Capitol, that OPS has not paid its actuarially required contributions. It, I believe it's very clear OPS has paid every, every ARC that has been required by law, and it had, they've been paid in the amounts required by law. There is some, not going to get down in the weeds, but there's been some reason why that misconception has arisen, but it has resulted in this, this amendment, which tries to have an enforcement mechanism in place, to make sure OPS pays the actuarially retired, required It has, we've worked with Senator Coulter, Coulterman, who's been very willing to work with us, to get it into a shape that is, is not the same kind of shape it was in before. Originally, it had reduced our TOA, state aid, each month over a period of, of a year. That had some, some effects throughout the TOA formula, and Senator Coulterman has revised the amendment to this point. It would, it would give a date by which OPS would have to pay its ARC, and if OPS did not pay the ARC, then it would withhold state aid until the full ARC has been paid. And that is, as I say, an enforcement mechanism to try to make sure that OPS does what I believe it has been doing. It makes some additional changes that are laid out in there, the primarily, in your slide, the primary concern with those is that it enhances, we believe, addition, OSERS ability to control some of the assumption, underlying assumptions that can affect that ARC, drive that ARC up or down without control by elected officials. So the, those are the two proposals currently pending before the retirement committee. Quick, quickly talk about legislative procedure, because there are some time constraints that are involved. LB 548, as I mentioned, is a carryover bill from last year. It had its public hearing last year. This year, the Chair of the Retirement Committee scheduled hearings on those last two amendments, and both of those have had their hearings as well. So what is left is for the retirement committee to sit down, have what's called an executive session, and work through, what's the language, which proposal do we want to do, what's the language, what will the bill look like? The retirement committee has prioritized this bill, meaning that if it moves from committee, it should get time for debate on the floor. can affect that ARC, drive that ARC up or down without control by elected officials. So the, those are the two proposals currently pending before the retirement committee. Quickly talk about legislative procedure, because there are some time constraints that are involved. LB548, as I mentioned, is a carryover bill from last year. It had its public hearing last year. This year, the Chair of the Retirement Committee scheduled hearings on those last two amendments, and both of those have had their hearings as well. So what is left is for the retirement committee to sit down, have what's called an executive session, and work through what's the language, which proposal do we want to do, what's the language, what will the bill look like? The retirement committee has prioritized this bill, meaning that if it moves from committee, it should get time for debate on the floor. The time considerations are that the legislature right now is set to adjourn April 18th is the scheduled last day, and there are 23 legislative days remaining in which to pass a bill. If the OPS board directs, we would start, we would immediately start working, or continue working with the committee to try to move forward a proposal that would include your direction. Now, on the pension obligation bonds, I should make clear, that concept, while it's supported by Senator Lindstrom, Senator Coulterman has also been working very closely with us. Other members of the committee have indicated that they'd be willing to support it as well. And so there is, I wouldn't promise anything can make it through the legislature, there is some support for it. That's all I have. Turn it to Connie to continue.
We testified, Mr. Snow and Mrs. Scotting testified before the retirement committee on February 14th about Amendment 1529 that John just spoke about. And after that hearing, or as a result of that hearing, the Chair of the Retirement Committee wanted to know a dollar amount, how much we needed for a pension bond. So we asked Pat Beckham, who is the actuary for the Retirement Committee, or the Retirement Board of Trustees, we asked her to tell us what the pension obligation bond would be so that we wouldn't have to make additional ARC payments. So as a result of that, she provided us, and you have this in your handout, it's on the very first page of the actuary report. And this is the, an analysis of the long-term implications of the funding under LB548, Amendment 1529. We asked her to do three different scenarios. The first one was a 30-year open amortization, which is what is in current statute, and the dollar amount was $309 million. Then, under the current OSERS funding policy, which is a closed 25-year period, it would require $417 million. And then a third one was a 30-year closed with layers. So these were the different dollar amounts that she had come up with. And then if you turn to, well, also to explain this, this is also on the first page, the amortization of the unfunded actuary over a 30-year open period is what's in current law. And then the OSERS funding policy, which is an amendment that is in LB548, that Senator Coulterman has, which is actually a closed 25-year amortization period, and then the layered amount. Then if you turn to Exhibit A1 in that actuary summary that we had from Ms. Beckham, you'll see that Exhibit A1 is the current statute over 30-year period. That was with the $309 million bond proceeds. And then we turn to Exhibit A2, which is in your handout also. That's the closed 27-year, 25-year period, which is the current OSERS policy, which is $417 million. And then if you look at Exhibit A3, that is the 30-year layered amount. And we have asked Pat Beckham to be here to answer any questions you have about this actuarial study. But I will tell you also, just as a point of information, our employer and employee contributions that we take monthly from our payroll is $6 million that we contribute to the OSERS retirement. In addition to that, our OSERS pension payroll for the retirees is $10 million. So they're drawing down $4 million from investments or from the principal each month to make the payroll that they have. So over time, that's a $48 million draw from the pension fund. And our allocation is 30% in the, what is it called? 70% in the market equities and 30% in alternatives. So when we're drawing down from that balance, it's coming from the market equity. So I just thought I'd point that out. And then if you do have questions, Pat's here to answer those. Otherwise, we have Bruce Luthler here with Emeritus, who's our financial advisor that can go over a payment summary for you as well.
Real quick, does anybody have any questions so far on the board? Just the forward button, I assume? I'll get to the next screen. Oh, no, that's not. Oh, I got you. Hey, there I am. Okay, fair enough. The handout that we've, I hopefully included, and we have up on the scale, was asked by Connie. We've been through various sundry scenarios, I'm sorry. For the record, Bruce Luthler, Emeritus Investment Corp. in Omaha, and an OPS graduate for that matter, but there you go. We've been, we've been through quite a few numbers, just testing some skills, but what we've come across and what Connie's asked us to run would be, obviously, the first question was the possibility of issuing some $300, $350 million worth of pension obligation bonds. As Superintendent Evans pointed out, I mean, it's been, it's not something that gets done every day, but it's certainly been done before. The bigger key that you want to be concerned about, concerned when, especially when the rating agency is looking at the issuance of debt, is are you actually solving a long-term problem, or are you just trying to Band-Aid things as you move forward on an annual or by annual basis? But anyway, so what we've looked at here is two different scenarios of funding $309 million, and then $350 million. The analysis we put together shows the debt, the annual debt service payment that would be due, example on $309 million with an amortization over 25 years at 4.5%, you'll see that the board would have an obligation against that, a debt obligation against that of just shy of $21 million annually. Now, that debt payment would be fixed at the time of the issuance, just like the bond payments are. They're fixed at the time that you issue them. They won't change over a period of time unless you choose to change them by a refinance or restructure. We've shown three different levels of funding, whether it's at 4.5%, 4.75%, and 5%. I would tell you that at least from our marketing desk, one thing different about these bonds as opposed to the school bond issues that the district has issued in the past, these bonds, because of their purpose, would be taxable, which would mean an investor in these would have to pay taxes on the interest income that they earned on it. Contrary to the other general obligation bonds the district has issued for buildings, those bonds are tax exempt. So we've seen interest rates on those bonds that are 3% or lower than 3%. By similar nature, you're going to see bonds, interest rates on these bonds that are anywhere from 4% to 4.5%. So I think where we currently stand, if we were marketing bonds today for the district, we think the 4.5% number that we show here would be fairly attainable, I guess would be a better way to put it, so reasonable. But for reasons of caution, we've gone ahead and shown the interest rate at 4.75% and 5%. The other scenario we've shown on $309 million is an amortization over a 30-year period of time, and you'll see how that affects the, it obviously reduces the debt on an annual basis, but increases the debt over the entire period of time since you're doing it over 30 years. The other scenario we've shown here is a $350 million funding, again, over 25 years at the 4.5%, 4.75%, and 5%. And $350 million over 30 years at those same three debt service levels. The numbers on the far right, again, project, or information that's been provided by the actuarial report as to the projected ARC payments that the school district would be had to pay over that 25-year period of time, just as a comparison, so. It's, from my standpoint, it's fairly simple math, but it's a complicated issue. Any questions about the actual issuance of the debt? Or potential issuance of debt, I should say? I think you're, the attorney mentioned it very well. I mean, obviously, which you realize is the district does not currently have that statutory authority to issue the debt, which is why the legislation is looking for change at the particular point in time. Okay? Thank you very much.
And again, Pat Beckham is kind of to my far left in the back of the room. Again, as I started out, I mean, these are not easy conversations, and these aren't conversations that any one of us would like to have. I don't think it's something that we enjoy having, but we're trying to make the best of a tough spot. How do we create something that's stable, long-term? How do we create something that's predictable for budgeting processes? And this provides us one opportunity for that. But I can't, I can't sit here and say that it is without all risk. I think that would be an inaccurate statement. I think I can point to situations where it has worked, and other situations across the United States, other states, and other entities that have used this as a tool and mechanism to help them with an unfunded liability caused by low investment returns. So no guarantees, but on the other hand, we know what that chart looked like that Mr. Lindsay went over earlier. And it's really not an issue that's going to be devastating this year for us, but when you start to look five years down the road, and six and seven years down the road, and now you're up to a $30 million reduction in budgeting, and I think it was 40 million by the time we were to year eight, Mr. Lindsay, is that accurate?
$46 million in 2041.
2041, 46 million. Well, you can imagine the impact on our school district. And so that's what we're trying to come up with, is something that helps avoid what will be just very, very devastating for the school district. And it's one of those challenges that no one, again, wants to discuss, but I think this is the best that we can figure out within the constraints that we have statutorily in front of us. So I stop at that, and we are all, we all stand for questions with Mr. Lindsay, Ms. Beckham, Mr. Luthler. And again, I handed out the Nebraska Investment Council's chief, you should have that information on his predictions of what he believes will happen at a minimum of a 6.6% growth over a 30-year window. And by the way, I want to continue to say, we're talking about a 30-year window. It's not what happens tomorrow, it's not what happens next year, it's not what happens even five years down the road. It's what we're predicting over a long period of time, because we know investments go up and go down. We all know that. And we all know that there are swings up and down, but if you do the long math on it, there's a fellow that knows a little bit about that, lives in this city, that I think has done pretty well with the long picture. And this is a long-picture item. And so if you ask Mr. Buffett to look long, I think he would say, invest for the long haul. And so that's what this is, and that's what the Nebraska Investment Council would do with that asset allocation. So with that, we all stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Ms. Scotty?
I thought I would just expand on a couple of things, since I had the opportunity to spend a lot of time researching this and also visiting with folks this past week. And just to make sure, and I'm thinking about Aaron over here, too, to make sure that we get a few points out there for the public, so that it's very clear what we're attempting to do and what we're not attempting to do. So one of the comments I heard was us investing in the future, and my comment back on that was, the money is now in Lincoln. They'll be handling all the investments. We will no longer have any authority over that, nor do we ever intend to bring that authority back to us. The second comment I heard was changing benefits to be richer than what the state system is. We have worked really, really hard to get aligned to the state system, and we are very close to that. And I don't believe we have any intention of changing that to make our system richer, which would end up putting a greater burden on the system. So I think that's important to note. I think if you look at Page 7 of the CAPERS handout, while the 2015 is a very recent issue and probably not a ton of data there on it, you can look at the 2004 issue and pretty clearly see the savings number that the state of Kansas has been able to generate on that initial, I think, what was it, $500 million bond issue? I think that's probably pretty, pretty much in line with what I would expect that we would see at a comparable, that this was 500 million clearly, so a little bit different dollar amounts. I think one of the things, as I've studied this, is that infusion upfront being so critical to the system, if it's infused upfront, we have the opportunity for these dollars to be allocated at the actual allocation that the state would want us to have. So if you look at the OSERS summary that Aon prepared back in third quarter, which was September 30th, it's the most recent one we have, as Connie mentioned, between U.S. equity and fixed income, we're not right-sized yet, and we're still sitting at 30.5% in real estate, hedge funds, and private equity. This would give us the opportunity to put all of this money in at the allocation the state would like us to see, which would reduce the risk of our current portfolio. Our portfolio sits at a fairly high risk still because of the 1/3 in these higher-risk investments. So by infusing the money upfront, and by allowing that allocation to happen right away, we bring down that risk in the portfolio. And I think the other thing just that is really important for, whether it be the public or other people who might be listening, to understand is that it's truly a restructuring of debt, and it's not a, it's not a new debt. Because we're an accrual basis taxpayer, it's sitting on our books as it is, and I think that's important for us all to remember. So anyway, those are just a few of the thoughts that I had, as I've spent time studying it. I do kind of have a question for Pat Beckham. I don't know if, and I want to keep it real high level, but can you help us to understand, when you were doing the projections of staff, and you're running all the payroll numbers, are you looking at the average length of time an employee stays with us? Or in your calculations, is it more done based on retirement at age X? Is that?
That's a good question, and I'll try to keep it high level. The projections that are included in the letter that you have are very sophisticated. They're called open group actuarial projections, and we're basically modeling the population each year, assuming all actuarial assumptions are met. And that's really important, that you understand that. And there are lots of assumptions, not just investment return assumptions, there are retirement rates, salary increases, termination of employment. So we're assuming all those assumptions are met each year, which means there's people leaving the active population. There's people retiring, there's people just leaving, terminating employment, there's a few people that might die or become disabled. And then we assume, for all those people that leave, they are replaced, so the number of active members remain stable. And they're replaced with people who look similar to what that's been in about the last three to five years. Okay? So we keep the number of people level, and we keep the balance between the classified and the certificated group the same. Okay? So that it, you know, they're always kind of maintaining the same relative proportions. Does that answer your question?
So you're using kind of historical, historical information in some ways to help you understand what's happening?
The, we do an experience study every four years, in which we set the assumptions forward-looking. We do look back to see what's happened for demographic assumptions, like retirement, termination of employment. It's helpful, what's happened in the past is helpful. But we also don't, you know, we don't drive looking in the rearview mirror. Just because that's happened in the past, we'll use some professional judgment to set those assumptions looking forward. So it's our best estimate for what we think is going to happen in the population, because what happens with members is going to drive your benefit payments, which drives your liability. So the reason we assume all those assumptions are met in the future and people are replaced is that we're getting kind of a consistent picture from year to year to year over that 30-year projection period. So it literally is, under actuarial standards of practice, our best estimate. But again, no guarantees on that.
Great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Andy, Mr. Pearlman?
I do have a couple of questions. I'm not sure who the best person is to ask about it, but it has to do with pages 11, 12, and 13 of the, of the PowerPoint, and the assumed rate of returns. So that'd be, would be the best, Pat? Sorry.
The chairs in the front are a lot better than ones in the back.
My first question is, and maybe this was discussed, I was reading a lot while there was discussion, but the assumed rate of returns on the investment, is that 7.5% for these projections?
Yes. The current assumption for the OSER's portfolio, long-term assumption, is 7.5% rate of return. And again, actuaries are looking over a very long, a very long term. Your benefit payments project out about 100 years. So over that long term, that's what we expect is a reasonable median, kind of an average return over that period. It's going to vary from year to year.
And what impact would it have, should those, you know, because again, you are talking about an average, but what would be the impact if in the early years, say, 2018 through 2024, just throwing out numbers, were returns of 2%, 4%, 6% over the long-term 30-year plan?
If the return, so all the projections assume that 7.5% is earned each and every year, to the extent returns are lower, it's going to create a higher total actuarial required contribution and force there to be an additional district contribution.
So not just the ARC that we have planned on if we do nothing, but an additional ARC?
Right. So the projections assume there's this influx of cash during 2018 that's sufficient to eliminate any additional district contribution in future years. But, you know, you only pay benefit payments with contributions or investment income. So if your investment income is lower, really in, in any of those years, but in the short term, that means that the 309 million, for example, isn't sufficient to eliminate the actuarial, additional actuarial contribution.
And so although over, say, 30 years, if the district does have an average, even throughout those 30 years, of 7.5%, there could be seven to 10 to 12 years where the return is less than what our obligations are to meet the requirements to pay back the pension obligation bond? I mean, that's a possibility, right?
Yeah. If, if you issue the bonds at, at 4.5%, there, there's some probability that that may not be met, and that probability is higher in the short term than the long term. If you look at the volatility in the portfolio, excuse me, the longer you go out, the more the range narrows, and the more likely it is that, that you're going to fall at a rate that's higher. But in the short term, you clearly could, and the other risk is if the low returns come at the beginning, and the high returns come later, you don't have as much money to compound at the higher rate of return. That's the risk. The, I mean, that's the risk in funding any pension plan, with or without bonds.
So like, for example, in Kansas, their timing was great.
Let them know. They issued that in 2004, and then 2008 hit, but there was a bounce back after 2008.
300%, right.
I mean, the investment return, you know, I have to speak to that, and I'm not an investment expert, but you, you know, you all know the ups and downs of the market, and the problem is, nobody knows exactly when the bad is coming or how bad it'll be. And, and that's, that's the risk, that there's some probability, you know, that, let's say, you know, that the 7.5% is the expected return, that means half the time, the return is going to be 7.5% or better, and about half the time, it's going to be lower than 7.5%. So that's, risk is uncertainty to actuaries. And that, that's the risk, that there is no guarantees here, and you have a pretty high standard deviation or measure of volatility on the portfolio, and that volatility will translate through to your actuarial contributions. That, that's the challenge.
Right. I, I don't know much about investment, but I do know one guy who said, "When everyone gets out, get in, and when everyone's in, get out."
Mr. President, just to add to Ms. Beckham's remark, and I think it is, that 30-year vision is the thing on it, where you're not trying to time the market, and there's no timing to the market. The reason '04 worked out in the example of CAPERS is that they had a long period of time. So even though four and a half years later, in 2009, we had one of the biggest declines in market equities, all of that was, came back, and as Mr. Pearlman said, with great vigor. In the 2012 obligation bond, that looks pretty good for CAPERS right now, but we don't know what's going to happen tomorrow. But we know that over 30 years, just like that '04 obligation, it's probably going to be pretty good, based on all the evidence from an actuarial viewpoint, as well as from an Investment Council viewpoint. So, that is, that is the piece that's so difficult here, is we're not looking at today, we're really looking at a 30-year window.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mrs. Scotty?
And just to think about, the Nebraska Investment Officer selects, his portfolio and the Nebraska Investment Office and the Council have chosen a portfolio allocation that's, that's far more conservative. So the risk, so if you look at the, at a risk model, they're going to be much more in the center of that versus out on the fringes. Our portfolio that we had was, we were an outlier on the risk matrix. And so while we were laying out here, they were here, so when you have volatility in the market, yes, you experience the volatility, but you may not experience it at nearly the radical, in the radical way that you would if you had high risk. And just thinking about the performance of the portfolio we had, we didn't perform over the market in '15 or '16, and, and that's kind of what's put us here. So, the opportunity for that infusion of cash upfront, it doesn't really matter whether it's an ARC payment or whether it's a bond payment, we've, we've got the risk out there, and the bond payment allows that risk to be spread over 30 years. The ARC payment has that risk happening every single year with volatility attached to that potential, because of, as Mrs. Kenoki mentioned, just what we're putting in and what we're taking out, there's really no opportunity for the ARC payment to work, because we're pulling out everything that we're putting in. And, and we're probably pulling it out of some, some equity, but of that fixed income portfolio, too, because you're allowing all of your income to be your payment excess, and that, and that's a challenge when you're working in a portfolio like this.
Ms. America?
I mean, I, I do want to acknowledge, there, there is a little bit of risk, because with, with anything, there's a little bit of risk. But to me, the risk is, I'm trying to find the word I want to say. It is mitigated, yes. Because with, if we do absolutely nothing, we have those projections on, I think it was slide four, but those projections get redone every single year, and they could drastically change, where right now, we think 2019 is projected to be 21.3. It could completely change and come back at 40. It could completely change and come back at 10. That's probably less likely, but we don't know what that amount is going to be every year. And from a district standpoint, that makes budgeting impossible, because we don't know from year to year what that payment is going to be, where with the pension obligation bond, you have the set bond payment that is in some of the later slides. And yes, there could be, there might be a small ARC added on top of that, if there is a really bad year. We could run into that type of situation, but we've got more stability and knowing, okay, this is our amount, this is what we have to budget for and work with every year, and we know that amount. We don't have those wild swings that we really can't, can't prepare for, because they're going to change from year to year.
Mr. Scanlon?
I guess my first question is for Connie. You said that we're paying out $4 million more than we're taking in each, each month? Oh, I was hopeful that was a year, but, no, that's pretty bad. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. And then, next question's for John Lindsey. On the LB548, AM 1529, is there any provision in there that dissolves OSERS and combines with EMPERS as far as the administrative responsibilities? I, my understanding is, and obviously can't fault them, but the state doesn't want anything to do with our unfunded liability. If we're able to get that under control with these pension obligation bonds, is there anything in there that would eliminate our OSERS and combine it with EMPERS, so we can stop wasting over $1 million a year with our OSERS?
LB548 did have that provision. That was the thrust of LB548. But those provisions simply were not going to get the support because of the unfunded liability. So that portion of LB548 goes away under either amendment that was up there, that any combination to achieve those administrative savings is not, or would not be included in either amendment. The thought has been that any discussion of doing that has to wait until the unfunded liability is stabilized.
So the state is willing to start talking about that once OPS gets the unfunded liability portion of their pension under control? Is that what you're saying?
I think they would talk about it, I would not commit them one way or the other. The bottom line is, you'd have to, you'd have to convince the governor that, that the state would not be at risk for any of that liability of OPS. You'd have to convince the legislature, the retirement committee and the legislature of, of those things. I have not, I have not heard anybody say, "We're not willing to talk about that once the unfunded liability is addressed." But I have heard very few say, "We're willing to talk about it while that unfunded liability is, is out there."
Okay. And then, I guess with this, the currently, the current projected ARCs, payments that we see on slide four, is there anything, I guess, I'm, I'm not fully understanding, if we infuse the large sum of money with the pension obligation fund, bonds, does that protect the taxpayers from those numbers changing a great deal if, you know, we do hit the wrong timing in the market and we invest some in the, you know, we have one of those days where it's a negative 1,500 points on the Dow? I, I mean, where, where do we end up? Where's the taxpayer on the, on the hook for that if, if that happens?
That's, it's probably a question better answered by Pat Beckham, but I'll take just a real layman's sort of approach. An actuarial valuation is a snapshot. It's a picture that you take on, on any given day, because you have to start, and you have to just have facts to work with. Those projections are going to vary year to year. So the numbers that are, that appear on slide four, which actually were taken from a table that's later in the, in the, that was prepared by Ms. Beckham, those, my understanding, will change year to year. They might vary a great deal, might vary minimally, might close. I think it's, I, that's why, I think partially why you have an actuarial valuation every year, that, that tells you what is the status of a, of a retirement plan this year.
Could I add just a couple?
Absolutely.
If you don't mind, I'll add just a little bit of color commentary to that. He is correct that the valuations are a snapshot, and they capture everything that's happened at that point in time. So obviously, the numbers in front of you, again, assume all actuarial assumptions are met each year, but the only thing I can tell you for certain is that won't happen for five years. Been doing this for 35 years and never seen it happen two years in a row. But, so it does mean that those numbers are subject to change, but there are some kind of tools in the actuarial toolbox that we use to try to stabilize contributions. One is asset smoothing. So whatever happens in the market, we don't recognize it all in, in the next valuation, kind of smooth it over a period of five to seven years. And then whatever the dollar amount of that is that we recognize, gets sort of paid back to the system over a 25-year period. So those help mitigate the impact of sort of a shock factor, and give you time for hopefully the positive end to come back and offset some of that. So that would help stabilize it. But I do want to make it clear, you know, if the 309 million goes in, that does not mean that there won't be any additional piece going forward, but the additional piece would be lower than if it were not.
Did you have something, Ms. Neelasprecha?
If I might just direct you, Mr. Scanlon, to page 11 on the slide presentation. So if you pull that up, and I can pull it up right here for everyone else. So if you look at the different columns, as you can see, you've got additional on the right-hand slide, side of the slide. If you look at the contribution of the additional 309 million, you will see after that, all of those additional district contributions go to zero. And so the point is to try to put enough money into the system so that those additional district contributions do not occur, so that you will not have the contributions that you see on page four, which are protected, projected to go for the future. And so the difference between the additional district contributions now is those numbers go up over a period of years, whereas putting and infusing a pension obligation bond, a large lump sum, that $309 million, takes those additional district contributions to zero, or that's the hope for the market going forward.
Mr. Scanlon?
So I guess with us losing $4 million a month because of what's being taken out as opposed to being what's put in, how is 309 million, I mean, in one year, we're losing 48, or what is it, yeah, 48 million? Well, yeah. How, how do we, I guess, stop the bleeding with just 309 million, you know?
And I'll defer to Pat on this as well, but the $4 million, as I, as I look at it, it's coming out of the investment returns somehow, and so it, it's not actually, we don't know exactly how it's adding to the unfunded liability, because we don't know what the total amount of the investment returns are for the actuarial work. And so it may be that that $4 million is well-covered by investment returns, because we know right now, for example, Mr. White, Michael Walden Newman was here, and he told us that we're at 9.5% growth rate. And so 9.5% on over a billion dollars in assets, you have money to pay that 4 million. But the problem is, if that 9.5% goes back down to 3.5%, like we've had in, I don't know, three or four years ago, that investment return then makes that unfunded liability grow. So it's not quite accurate that it's 4 million. We don't, it's 4 million, but we don't know if the investment returns are covering that, and maybe covering that with even more. And Pat, is that an accurate way to describe that?
This gets a little, a little complicated. This gets a little, a little complicated. Remember, pension funding is different than social security in that we're putting money in because we know that we're going to be paying more money out, and we don't want to be on a pay-as-you-go basis. Okay? This fund is very mature. It's been around since the 1950s. The population's matured, so it's not unusual that the benefit payments exceed the contributions. Think if you were 100% funded, you'd be putting even less money in, but still paying that much money out. So I wouldn't get particularly hung up on what, what we would call the negative cash flow. It is an issue from an asset allocation perspective if it becomes too large. And I'm not an expert, but usually if it's 3% to 5% of your portfolio, it's usually not a problem. That's something the Nebraska Investment Council will clearly look at when they're doing their asset allocation work for the fund. But you're also, for all the benefit payments you're paying out, you're losing liabilities as well as assets. You don't owe those people those payments anymore. So if you think about a ledger, assets and liabilities, kind of both are going down with your benefit payments. I don't know if that is just more confusing or if it's helpful at all, but if, if we always thought the fund was going to go up, it, it kind of wouldn't make sense to fund, to be putting a lot of money away now. I mean, we're, over the years, money's been put away in anticipation of the fact that we would get to the point where there would be more benefit payments than contributions. And money will continue to go in. You're putting 309 million in, but another 21.66% goes in every, every year to fund, fund the benefits and move the system towards full funding. And that occurs over a long period of time. So again, I wouldn't particularly get hung up on the fact that benefit payments exceed contributions as long as it isn't a big percent of your overall market value. Does that raise more questions or does it help? No? No better way to put it. Again, the, most of these plans have been around for over 50 years, so you've got people who have been working for a long time. You have a lot of people drawing benefits. It's not an unexpected, again, from an actuarial perspective, we, we expect that those benefit payments continue to grow. People's salaries are growing, that, that whole dynamic, and that's why we're funding. And again, if you were 100% funded, you'd have more negative cash flow than you do now because you're making contributions to fund for your current actives and you're paying a portion of the unfunded liability. If there were no payment on the unfunded liability, then you'd, your cash flow would be even more negative, but it wouldn't be bad because you're 100% funded. So pension funding's complicated because it's not, there's not one metric you can look at and say, "Good, bad." There's lots of moving parts to this, which is job security for actuaries, but, but it just, it, it just isn't as big a concern unless it gets to be at a level that would keep you from investing the way you, the Investment Council, the way they want to, to earn the return. That, that's when it's a problem. If you need more liquidity to pay benefits and you can't invest, you know, as much in equities or in the market, then, then it has an impact and then your expected return is lower. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I guess. I mean, it's just, it's a matter of, you're right, pensions are a lot more complicated because you're taking and paying out benefits as you're also taking contributions.
That's one of the big parts.
You know, my biggest concern is that the OSERS pension, pension has strongly underperformed other public pensions, and I have very little faith in what has happened in the past, so I'm trying to gain, I, I feel better that it's at EMPIRES now, but I still struggle with the, I guess, just the confidence that we're on the right track.
Mrs. Gotti?
So maybe one of the, and actuary reports are fascinating to read, but there is a, there is a page on solvency that might help everyone to kind of understand where this particular system is currently sitting. And yes, we don't want to see 48 million paid out when we expect to get 100 million in because that's, that's, that's the reality of the question you just asked, and, and that is where we're sitting today. If you go, and we don't have it on the slides, on, on the PowerPoint, but, but to Matt's question on infusing the money upfront, there's a second page to all of the actuary reports that Pat's prepared for us, which is wonderful. And for instance, the one example I have in front of me, because I don't have all of them, but is if 364 million went in, it would significantly bring our funded ratio up at that time. And so really what we're doing is we're stabilizing the system for a period of time while the district manages through, and it's going to be a process over the next six to eight years to really manage the budget, make decisions that are going to be tough decisions. And during that time period, this infused money upfront will allow us to stabilize the OSERS system. And that's really what we're talking about, is stabilizing the system and hopefully getting to a place where we have done all the right sizing that we need to and done all of the work that needs to happen to be able to continue on. I don't, I don't know that I would ever go out there and say, "We'll never have another ARC payment." I think that would, that would be a way out there statement to have. I don't know that those ARC payments would be small or what someone would consider large because it's relative at that moment in time for whatever and whoever is sitting in these board seats. So there's lots of things that could impact that ARC payment. A change in the interest rate would impact it. A change in the longevity of someone, of a group and their life. I mean, that has impacted the unfunded liability before in lots of ways. I've sat through those experience study reports. So there are things that would definitely impact it. What we're talking about here tonight is the opportunity to infuse funding in that would create stability in the system and lessen what we know today. If you just compare what we know today in 30 years of ARC payments versus paying it into the system, we're talking about millions and millions of dollars of savings to the taxpayer. It does not mean that we're secure and we're set for life. It means we have to continue to work at this and that there will be plenty of work ahead of us. But it gives the system and the district an opportunity to really take a hard look at the budget and make some tough decisions as we move forward, which will help. The way that we're going to help the system is by bringing down that unfunded liability. And that's, that's, that's the reality of it. If we can bring down the unfunded liability, we'll benefit both the taxpayers and the beneficiaries of the system and ultimately the children who are looking to us to provide an education and not be a funding mechanism for a pension system. So, and that's kind of the way, when you look at it, that I see it, and, and the actuary information is complicated and can always be changing. We don't know that the numbers that show up on the slide in a month or two months are going to be anywhere at those numbers. I mean, they could be entirely different because of things that have happened in the past year.
Mr. Pearlman.
Let me ask this question. This, this is a hard question because we're dealing with taxpayers' money, and so let me, let me ask the worst-case scenario. What would happen if we have $300 million in a pension obligation bond and we see a crash that is equivalent to the one that we saw in 2008? Anyone?
We have the ability to model that in the, in the projections, but I mean, I can't give you anything off the top of my head of what the magnitude would be, but I think the question that would beg also is, so that's a one-year experience, and the question is what happens after that? You know, would we model '08 and then, you know, the next five years to, because that one, you know, that one year, if you have a, and I don't remember what OSERS return was, but a lot of my clients had a minus 25 to minus 28% return that year. So if we assume that happens, and then you just earn 7.5 after that, it, I'm sure it's going to look pretty dismal. But if you assume that the market would rebound like it did after the financial crisis, then it looks totally different. And, and that's the hard part about picking scenarios, is, you know, how do you pick something that's likely to happen other than going back? But if you wanted to model, you know, 2008 through 2013 based on the EMPIRES portfolio and just to see what that looked like, that could be done. Or any other hypothetical scenario that you can come up with. We can do that. It's just I can't give you those kind of numbers off the top of my head.
Right, but what we would have to deal with as a district isn't a 30-year average trend. We have to deal with it year by year, right?
Yeah, we do evaluation every year, and I believe that the provision for the additional ARC payment would, would still be in statute, so there would be an additional amount. But what you need to compare it to is the baseline without the, the 309 million and with the 300 million to compare the additional contributions. You see what I'm saying? You, you, you need, well.
Pat, if I could, if I could help.
I think, I think the point is, one that we had a conversation with the Legislative Committee on Friday, is that if you want to assume a massive market crash after you've put 300 million in, you also have to compare that to a massive market crash if you hadn't put the 300 million in. And so if you, if you hadn't put the 300 million in, you're, and they had a massive market crash, your ARC payments just went from 25 million a year to maybe 50 or 60 million, depending on, on how big the crash was. The bottom line about this proposal is that it's designed, and Mr. Evans hit upon it and several others have said, it's designed to not be focused on one year. It's designed to be focused on a 30-year amortization period and a long-term solution. And during that, there's going to be ups and downs. There's going to be 2008s, there's going to be 2005s. They're going to be all over, all over the place. And the goal of this, and what we asked from the very beginning, was a very simple analysis. What number maximizes the likelihood that you would not have to make an ARC payment, an additional ARC payment over the next 30 years? Is it possible that in an individual year, you have to make one? Yes. But it's going to be significantly smaller than if you took a pay-as-you-go approach. And this is designed to provide the district with predictability and stability while at the same time maintaining the responsibility we have to the 52,000 kids we're trying to educate and the men and women who are currently employed in our system and the men and women who are retired from our system to try and balance, balance those needs. If the market, you know, the, what Mr. Walden Newman testified at the legislative hearing very simply that he would like the money the day after a crash, but he's also indicated to us, it doesn't matter when they get the money because they aren't worried about this from one year to, or one day to the next, one week to the next. This is a 30-year view. And historically speaking, I think, Ms. Beckham testified about that, historically speaking, the number that's been projected is attainable over, over 75, over, over the 30 years. And as we talked about before this meeting, I think, none of us, if we could predict what the market was going to do, we would all be sitting somewhere else at 8:35 on a Monday night, but we can't. And so there is risk. We've, we've talked about that. But you can't look at it one way without acknowledging that the flip side is true, that with no investment, a massive market crash would also have a dramatic and significant negative impact on the district.
Right, but I guess my question is, is this an additional significant impact?
Well, it depends on whether or not you view the stability and the predictability of the bond payments to be valuable. So if you lost market, if you lost 30% of market value on a billion five, which is what you'd have if, if you invested 309 million, if you lost 30% on a billion five, you'd be at a billion. But if you lost 30% at a billion two, which is where you are now, you'd be down at 800 million. So you've got, you still have 200 million more ahead to recover as the market recovers than you would be if you hadn't had the investment. And so to jump back up from a billion two that goes down to, to 800 million versus a, a billion five that goes down to a billion two, there's greater opportunity for that to come. And I suspect, based on our earlier conversations, that the, that the, the reality of the situation is that the investment of a large lump sum like this will help the funding of our current system. It, it doesn't hurt it. Is there a risk there? Yes. But doing nothing, and I think Mr. Evans said this earlier, the, the risk is greater of doing nothing. This provides stability and predictability.
I guess this email that you've given to the board members, that's not on this presentation, is that correct?
No, that's just, that's an email from Michael Walden Newman, just to give you the investment asset allocation direction and also his own thoughts on where he's aiming and targeting at that 6.66% return, even though the assumption rate for Nebraska Investment Council and EMPIRES is 7.5.
Okay. Just two things I'd like to point out to the, to the public, and I think it'd probably be a good idea to let this email, release it to the public so they can see.
Sure.
Michael Walden Newman does, in this email, state that if OPS sells pension bonds, we will invest the proceeds as soon as we receive them. And that's the Nebraska Investment Council. And then the second one, which is kind of a concern that I've had, to mitigate concern about investing 250 to 300 million all at once, I did suggest to OPS reps in my office that they explore issuing the amount as a series of bonds of, say, 50 million a month for five or six months. This would be a way to dollar-cost average into the market. I repeated this to the Retirement Systems Committee when they asked me a few impromptu questions at the February 14 meeting. I think that, I feel more comfortable doing the bonds in $50 million increments as, as stated in that email, just to kind of mitigate the, the risk that I think so many of us are very concerned about.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. Any other comments?
Well, um, no, okay. So we're, I have a question for Mr. Lindsay. Keep you on your toes, I guess. Can you walk us through, so let's assume the board approves the motion tonight. Can you walk us through the next steps in Lincoln?
If the board were to approve it, Rochelle and I, Rochelle Mallett and I would visit tomorrow with Senator Lindstrom, Senator Coulterman, tell them about the board's action. At some point, I would think in the next week, the Retirement Committee would sit down with the recommendation of the position from OPS and would, working with OPS, working with Committee Counsel for the Retirement Committee, actually craft what that language would be to effectuate the position that you have. From there, I believe the committee, I think we have a, a good shot at the committee then advancing that bill to the floor. Once it's on the floor, the speaker determines when it gets scheduled for debate. It has priority status as a committee priority, so it would be in a grouping of bills that have committee priority status. have committee priority status. The Speaker, scheduling for the Speaker depends on how much time various bills will take, how controversial they are, how many amendments are filed, and he tries to get blocks of time that will handle most efficiently various bills. So I couldn't really predict when the bill would come up on the floor, but I think it's very probable, highly likely that we'll get floor time.
Thank you so much. That answered my entire... Ms. Gotti?
So I move that the Board of Education continue its support for AM 1529 to LB 548 so long as the lump sum contribution to the Omaha Schools' employees' retirement system contemplated in that the amendment does not exceed $350 million.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Gotti and a second by Ms. Merica. Any discussion? Mr. Scanlon?
I just got a question as far as legislatively, if we or board members would want that $50, $50 million a month increments, would that have to be part of our recommended motion? Or would that be something that's worked out with the legislature or to, I guess, to let the state senators understand what the board would feel comfortable with?
The position, the legislation is not going to come out exactly as that amendment is drafted. The committee's going to work with it. What we work with is your direction, the sense of what you're doing. And I've picked up, and I think we can work out having that option in there for the board to issue, and I don't know much about bonds, but to issue bonds in a series of tranches that would accomplish what the Investment Officer has suggested. I think that could be included in legislation to give that option to this board.
Mrs. Gotti?
I think one of the things we probably want to think about is just being very broad in this because we may, let's say we're issuing these in $50 million tranches and we get that fourth rate hike at some point this year that, you know, right now they've penciled in and we don't really know when it's, when those things are coming. We want to have the flexibility as a board to say, stop, you know, interest rates are too high, we're not going to move forward with this tranche, or those kind of things. So I think anything that gets too much into the details, we might want to not be, have written into legislation as far as committing us to things that we don't know if we can go there on. I don't know if that's fair.
Yes, if I may. I mean, similar to what we've done on the bond issues for the school district, on the voted issues, a suggestion would certainly be that maybe the language is that the district would issue bonds in issue or issues as designated, because the board is ultimately going to have control on what you do and when you do it. I mean, that, the resolution comes back to the board for authorization of issuance. So your board's going to have complete control on how that gets managed. And we may have some suggestions, we may have some ideas, we may be able to talk about the market and things that may change minds or may change sizes, but I think Mrs. Gotti is getting to is if, I mean, the legislature will certainly know your intention, and especially if the language says issue or issues, they'll recognize that they'll be done in multiple issues without handcuffing yourself to say they have to be $50 million pieces once a month. Because I'd have some commentary on that when it came time to actually issue the bond to be issuing bonds every month. So we, but you'd have the flexibility. Like I said, it's always going to come back to the board to do as the board sees fit.
Do you have an additional question, Mr. Scanlon, with that? Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
Merica.
I.
Pearlman.
I'll abstain.
I.
Scanlon. Smith.
I.
Snow.
I.
Cassidy.
I.
Gotti.
I.
Holman.
I.
Eight I, one abstention.
Motion carries. Sticking what the J1B, is there any other legislative issues that the committee would like to discuss? Or anyone on the committee? It's attached to it. Mr. Pearlman?
No, we're still on the same item. It just says other legislative issues. So if there's anything else that you guys would like to discuss from your call or anything?
Well, I would ask the board over the, you know, between now and Friday, if possible, to take a look at LB 1052, which we heard about from public comment tonight, and maybe get your thoughts back to the Legislative Committee that meets every Friday and see if that's something that either, if you wanted more information from, and request it or just provide some feedback. Because we are always able to change our position as things move along and as we learn about particular bills. So if it's something you're interested in, and I'd encourage you to be interested in because there are, as we heard, other metropolitan school districts that are in support of this. And I believe what I've heard, I think this is accurate, that the State Education Association is in support of this bill too. So it's worth our time to take a look at and see if that's something that we as a board support. Thanks.
Following up on your comment, Mr. Pearlman, do we just, if we're in support of it, let the committee know, then you guys, as a committee, draft a letter of support? Or how does that process go?
I'll defer to the Chair of the Committee.
Ms. Merica.
So currently, our position on the bill is monitor and research, because we had some questions about what implications to the district were, et cetera. So I would say if board members do want additional information, maybe we coordinate that through Mr. Ray. Or if you want us to reconsider our position at our next board meeting, as he checks to see if he's on the TV screen, to get that request, get that information to Mr. Ray so that we can discuss that at our committee meeting on Friday and then bring back any type of recommendation to our next board meeting. And that would be, it wouldn't be essentially drafting a letter, it would be voting on changing our position.
Thank you. So you guys, please do, reach out to the committee, Mr. Ray, and he'll let the committee know they meet this Friday or have their call. Moving on to our agenda, moving on to the next item, it is not nine o'clock, it's not nine o'clock yet, so we're going to keep going through the agenda. J2A Comprehensive K2 Mathematics Plan. And thank you, guys, and staff, for staying late and enjoying this very fruitful discussion. So now let's talk about mathematics.
Thank you. Well, good evening, President Snow, Vice President Merica, members of the board, Superintendent Evans. It is a pleasure to provide you an update on OPS's K12 Mathematics Plan. Before I begin the presentation, I would like to do some introductions. You see quite a few people have moved forward to support me tonight, and I greatly appreciate that. And they really, truly have been a great support in working very intensely, very focused, and very strategic to develop a K12 Comprehensive Math Plan. So we have a variety of people here tonight. We have Susan Christopherson, who is the Director of Secondary Education. We have Donna Dobson, who is the Director of Elementary Education. We have Cara Saldierna, who is the Director of Special Education. We have Tina Forte, who is the Director of Title I. Jim Harrington is a math supervisor. Jenny Yuhas is a lead teacher in secondary for mathematics. We have Lisa Holland and Marnie Dreason are elementary supervisors. We have Val Chauvinick, who is a reach supervisor. We have Scott Schmidt-Bonnie, who is a Director of Research. And those are members of the math team, but in addition to the math team, we also have members of the task force here tonight. And so I would like to introduce and give our tasks, some of our members of the task force, a shout-out. We have Dr. Ladonna White-Gryffit. She is the Principal of Masters Elementary School. We have Faith Johnson, who is a teacher at Nathan Hale. We have Tanya Archie, who is a secondary math coach. We have Bobby Miller, who is a teacher at Masters Elementary, and he is also the OEA Vice President. And I do not believe I missed anybody. Okay. And we also have other members of the math task force. We have a total of 35 people. Unfortunately, some of them were unable to be here tonight because it's Parent Teacher Conference Week, and so they are in their buildings with their parents, conferencing. But we do appreciate our task force members being here today, and I would like to give them a shout-out because we really appreciate their leadership, because they are giving us that authentic practice from the field, and we need that. And we've done that in a variety of ways that you'll learn about through our presentation tonight. So real quickly, before I begin the presentation, we've done a lot of work, and it was very difficult for us to put all of the work that we have done into 10 slides. And so one of the things I just want to kind of outline as a process that we used in developing our plan is, of course, we reviewed best practices for district and school implementation, which included a needs assessment. So we started with a variety of needs assessment. Throughout the needs assessment and the research and literature reviews, we developed our scope of the work. From that scope of the work, we developed a draft plan. And then the draft plan is what the math task force and other stakeholders will review to provide feedback and next steps on. From that draft plan, we will prioritize, you will see that this is a three-year plan, so we need to prioritize what's first and how are we going to implement that, which will be developing ongoing and job-embedded professional development. We will also develop, with research's support, monitoring tools to support the implementation because we know that if it doesn't happen in the classroom, it didn't happen. And so our overall goal is going to be on focusing on implementation of the plan as well as monitoring the student outcomes. And then in addition to that process in creating the plan that we'll provide an overview on tonight, we did look outside of the box. When we stood before you on December 4th, you asked us to look outside of the box, and we did that. And so you will also see some of the structures and systems that we have put in place that we believe is going to create an environment that is conducive to learning and also increase student outcomes. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started. As you are aware, the Omaha Public Schools Strategic Plan drives all of our work to achieve our mission, preparing all students to excel in college, career, and life. The Strategic Plan is the driving force of the development of the OPS K12 Mathematics Plan. The plan focuses on guiding Principal Two to ensure we are providing a comprehensive, innovative, inclusive, and challenging educational experience to all of our students. The plan will also focus on Principal Three, and this part of the plan will detail the support provided for teachers and instructional leaders and for strategically placing instructional staff in our classrooms. Together, these principals will move us toward fulfilling our mission. The Comprehensive Plan expands upon five objectives in Principal Two. These are all related to implementing a comprehensive math plan with fidelity, utilizing the guaranteed and viable curriculum, providing descriptive feedback, and implementing best instructional practices. While these processes are in place, the math plan further details and enhances these components, along with adding additional strategies, structures, and systems within our district. The two objectives related to Principal Three focus on the highly effective teacher and principal. The Comprehensive Math Plan will detail the professional learning necessary to ensure that there is a highly effective teacher in every classroom and a highly effective principal in every school. The Comprehensive Math Plan includes the review and revision of the OPS Mathematics Mission, Vision, and Guiding Principles. And within the math plan, specific goals are constructed to fulfill the Strategic Plan. Implementation strategies are aligned to relevant research and current best practice. And various departments will be tasked with supporting leadership, implementation, equity, and monitoring practice. The specific actions and tasks will be established with input from all stakeholders, and collaboration will be ongoing to ensure the plan is implemented and all team members are held accountable. A K12 Math Task Force of leaders, teachers, and community members has been formed and will engage in a collaborative process to provide guidance, feedback, recommendations, and next steps for the math plan. It is also important to note that the Comprehensive Math Plan will be naturally embedded into each school building's school improvement plan for the 1819 school year. In addition to the creation of the K12 Comprehensive Math Plan, a committee reviewed data and made major revisions to the academic information form to assist with the proper placement of students as they transition from eighth to ninth grade. These revisions will aid us in placing students on the correct pathway to mathematical success. We also took a look at scheduling in our secondary schools. We brought in a national consultant by the name of Elliot Maring Blum, funded through a grant, and he provided professional development workshop on his latest work, The Educational Leader's Guide to School Scheduling. OPS utilized the steps provided in his book to create an OPS version that helps a school explore questions, expectations, and alignment for each step. Each school and program had the opportunities to attend and work with colleagues to build an efficient and effective schedule. When building a middle school and high school schedule, it is not an easy task. There are 12 steps recommended for building a middle school schedule, while there are 19 steps for building a high school schedule. And we are also providing follow-up options beyond having scheduling as an agenda topic as part of the regularly scheduled monthly data processor meetings. As you are aware, the College and Career Ready State Math Standards were new this year and were implemented in all OPS classrooms. The math standards also bring a new state assessment called the NS CAS, which stands for Nebraska Student-Centered Assessment System, which replaces the NISA assessment in grades three through eight. The new math assessment is a much more rigorous assessment and will create a new baseline for mathematics and OPS, similar to what the English Language Arts Assessment did for us last school year. And then, of course, our 11th graders in our high schools will continue to take the ACT as their state assessment. During the creation of the College and Career Ready Standards, OPS staff participated at several levels of the standards and assessment development at the state level. This included the writing and revision of standards and test items, content and bias review of test items, and the alignment of the ACT with College and Career Ready Standards. OPS also participated in a setting of proficiency levels for the state to use with the ACT. Curriculum Instruction Support developed curriculum guides which align to the adopted resources with the state standards, and we also created and provided bellwork to assist teachers with daily cumulative review aimed at preparing students for both the NS CAS and the ACT state assessment, and then work also continues in that area. The K12 Math Task Force of teachers, leaders, and community members has been formed and will engage in a collaborative process to provide feedback, guidance, and make recommendations for the math plan and professional learning. Right now, this team is looking at meeting in a half-day early April, and we look forward to working collaboratively with the task force to support the full implementation of our plan. A survey was recently administered to all mathematics teachers to gather data that will inform the math task force and aid in the refinement of the Comprehensive Math Plan. Survey questions captured perceptions about the support and guidance provided by the district to all teachers of mathematics, and this data will be utilized by the math task force in 2017. task force and the district. And then also, as the district completed a data review to support math achievement, attendance was noted as an area of focus. And as you can see on the data in front of you, the data shows a steady increase in the percentage of students proficient on math state test as a student is less absent for a larger percentage of the school year. But likewise, the data shows a steady decrease in the percentage of students proficient on math state test as a student is absent for a larger percentage of the school year. So as you can see, that our attendance also mirrors our math achievement results and suggests that there is a strong need to focus on attendance and supporting our students and families to ensure that they are in school on a consistent basis. And our colleagues in the Office of Community School and Family Engagement have begun work to support attendance for our students in OPS, and I know that they are the next information item to share some of that with you. And so this concludes our high-level overview of the work that is done, and at this time, I and members of the math team are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. So, is anybody up? All right, well, I'll start first then. So to slide, let's go to the math placement. Did district staff create that placement, or did you guys work with a third-party consultant to develop?
So, we, a couple of things. So yes, our department did create this. A committee was formed that brought people together, but then the research that was done, we spent a day with NDE, and they provided us best practices in the area of mathematics, and they also provided us a white paper in coursing and how to place students. And so it was the committee's work combined with the research where the math placement AIF form was created.
What did you guys use before that?
We had, we've always had an AIF form. The difference is in the past, it was up to the teacher to make those recommendations, and we've added more points of data to ensure that students are placed more correctly.
Awesome. So that leads to my next question, working with the NDE, your N-CAS. So when a new test is being brought or to the district, state assessment, do you guys work with the State Department, or do they actually give you a guideline? Do you guys go through, like, practice training? Do they train you on what N-CAS will be? Or is it all left up to just kind of, there's a packet, read it? And can you explain that process? And the reason why is just because I feel that every time we try to align, they change it?
Yes.
And it would just be, if you can explain that
Yes.
process, and if anything has changed, or...
Yes. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer your question, and then if there's more people behind me that can add to it, because you are exactly right, there are multiple things happening. And so we are engaging in multiple things and also responding. So NDE, actually, let's go back, state statute requires that the State Board of Education update the standards in the five core areas, one of which is math, every seven years. And so with the new standards, OPS and other districts across the state are also required to update their standards as well. Okay? And so within that process of updating the standards, that is what then brings the new material alignment, the new standards, and then we do go down, we send staff to NDE to work with them in the areas of, let's see here, taking a look at the standards and assessment review. We are part of the writing team, the revision of the standards and test items, we look at content and bias review of the test items, and then also alignment with the assessments. And then I know that Scott's department does work as well, so he can talk about that research assessment piece.
That is the one component I would add, is that the criterion of reference are those state standards, so there are a number of different types of tests. One is a criterion reference test, and that is to test students against some standard of expectation. Those are grade-level standards. And so with the alignment to the college and career readiness standards, the following year after the adoption of those standards by the state board, a new assessment comes to bear. And so with the adoption of the ELA assessments, a number of years ago, we got the new test last year. This year, we'll get the new math test after the adoption of those math standards last year. Then additionally, we'll look for a new science test in 2021 as we adopt the 3D science standards. And so it's kind of the standards come first to let us adjust our processes, but I think it is important to bear in mind how significantly the standards have changed or elevated as a result of the adoption of the college and career readiness standards. Mentioned it before, but to some extent, in some instances, rather, we've seen a drop of two-grade levels. So that which students were previously learning, say, in eighth grade, they're now learning in sixth grade, or in sixth grade, now they're learning in fourth grade. Obviously, with teachers teaching in most instances, the same grade level per year in your elementary levels, that takes some practice to getting used to, to teach that which a teacher two grades ahead of you was previously teaching. So you see, as the test comes the year after standards are adopted, it does take some time for a system to react to that change. OPS is a large system. We have around twenty-four hundred teachers who teach mathematics on a daily basis. Elementary, there's some different scheduling, but nearly on a daily basis. And so what we have to look at is the effort it takes to change lesson plans, realign materials, and to make sure that students are prepared to excel on those assessments.
So with that, you have that math task force, correct? Is, so I'm assuming you have college people on that force, right? So how do you take, if you get your data back and you look at African-American males and it hasn't progressed at all, does NDE take that into account? Do they take our data and work with us on figuring out how to get those test scores up? Is there, what is, obviously, there's no magic bullet, but what is the, what is the effort on that piece?
So, one, we don't wait for NDE or the data to come back and say that. So as part of our plan, what we have added that's new for OPS is, one, adding equity throughout the entire plan and strategy. And so one of the things that we will be monitoring with monitoring tools along the way is not just how well is it being implemented, but how are students learning within different subgroups, so that we can respond within rather than just after.
Are there early alerts, or is it at the end?
So one of the things that's in our math plan is our common assessments, and so we will be putting, the math task force will take a look at the common assessments used, and that was also one of the questions that teachers were asked on the survey last week. So we have, every mathematics teacher was surveyed, so we have that input, but then we'll also have that face-to-face, which is going to be really critical in the math task force, to help us say, okay, here's the feedback from the survey. You're also teachers in the field. Tell us what type of process and plan we need to put in place to implement a common assessment. And then we can, you work with research to develop data gathering tools and monitoring tools to catch that student learning quicker.
And this is, what I'm trying to get is, when we did our superintendent search and just meeting people from other districts across the country, a lot of people were talking about these early alerts where you're not waiting or finding out at the end that students are behind, you were getting these alerts that the district, the superintendent, you guys, the experts will know, we have, we're not on track. Is that what...
Yes. So one of the things that we'll be working with research on developing is, as they give a common assessment, one of the things that could happen is that that data is input into a system where we can pull it up. Is that what you're asking? By alert?
By alert, but something that we can see on a trend that you would see four months from now or whatever, if the students are on track or off track, and what is that plan? And would you guys be interested in bringing that back eventually to the board once you develop it?
Absolutely. And we can also do different measures as well.
Because I think that is critical, not just for me, but I think for everyone on the board, is that we, including constituents, is knowing where we are falling short and what we can do if we see that early, if there is something that we can do if we catch it early. I don't know, I'm not the expert. I'm just saying, I would assume that if you can alert it earlier, you can identify where you're falling short on, so you're not waiting at the end and realizing that you have an entire demographic group of students that haven't progressed, so.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that. And then one of the other things is, we're going to be asking other departments. Part of the math plan is we've added departments like the Executive Directors of School Support, Research, Human Resources, Office of Equity and Diversity, and we're asking them to come in as a next step to take a look at the plan, and how can they also provide leadership and support and also monitoring along the way? But thank you, I like your thinking on that, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. And if I can just add one thing very briefly. So one of the things we talked about was common formative assessments. Those are your quicker, more, you know, frequently done assessments. There are more organic-type formative assessments, teachers conduct every day in the classroom to see how the class is moving along in the material. Additionally, in the sweep of assessments we utilize, we have the interim assessment, which this is the first year of rollout for the map assessment. And I can tell you many of those conversations, the disaggregation of data, the kinds of questions we're getting from teachers is really exciting, and we have some good survey data we could share with you at some point regarding how that's going. But that gives us a much more timely understanding of where our students are performing, and it's not about, in days of the past, we were really concerned about predicting how we were going to do on the state test. And certainly, we have some information from MAP on that matter. But really, what MAP is focused on is identifying the instructional needs of a student below grade level, above grade level, on grade level, to allow for that teacher then, in that moment, to see who's having trouble with that material, to group them with students who have similar needs or challenges, be they at a certain skill set level or what have you, or a higher standard level, and then providing materials to address that need. Rather than waiting on the summative assessment, the NISA and Scott's assessment that then doesn't come back until, you know, November, December, and now, ah, the year's over. Really, with MAP and with common formative assessments, it allows us to kind of do that dipstick test and modify our efforts, both from a systemic level, but as well, and most importantly, at a classroom level every day with our students. And the last thing I would add is that the work that we've done in the data analysis to kind of build up to this process began with a disaggregation of data, looking for where students didn't follow sequences of courses, where might they should have, where opportunities to accelerate a student's learning by engaging them in more rigorous material wasn't engaged, we looked at why. So certainly disaggregation of that data to ensure that all of our students are being viewed with the opportunity that they possess for great success, both in our system and then beyond.
Well, thank you so much for that. I mean, I hope that moving forward, we'll get more regular updates. I mean, this is a great start, but more regular updates on where we are at that moment in the district. I know that will be a little bit more difficult to get, but I think with your knowledge and your support team, it allows you guys to maneuver a little bit better. Sorry for hogging so much time. Mrs. Gotti?
So I have several questions, and I know, Melissa, you had talked about, when you were up here last time, when we were talking about the test results. One of the things you mentioned was, back in the day when we did the CRTs, and I very much remember those CRTs very, very well, and to me, it was a great, and I volunteered in the classroom a lot and helped sometimes with that, even though I know that's probably, you know, not the way it's supposed to work, but it's so helpful for that teacher to understand, ah, and I can remember having conversations with one particular teacher where it was, okay, everybody forgot what greater than is. And, you know, she had covered it, but it was far enough out of their mind. And so I think kind of coming back to what Mark is saying and thinking about the interview process, and what I heard was more things like a monthly assessment that kind of lets you know, here's where we're at, and it gets reported through the district so that there was a better understanding of, are we moving on pace? And the EDs knew all of that information for each of their schools, and they could identify, ah, we are not moving on pace here. And so I think that was one of the things we heard as an idea that I think really, you know, spoke to me because I remembered back to the CRT days, and I, whether they were all perfect CRTs or not, and I know they weren't, most definitely, but they gave you a snapshot of what was happening, and it was a consistent snapshot throughout the year. One of the other questions I've got is, we used to give a test, the end of pre-algebra, to determine whether the student was ready to go on to algebra. I can't remember the name of that test. Do we still do that?
The New Orleans Hannah?
Yeah. New Orleans Hannah, okay.
Yeah.
So we are still doing that, and parents get to see that test still at the end of fifth grade?
So yes, I want to ask Jim Harrington to come up, because there's some other things that we have added as well
Okay.
that go with making sure that our students are placed in rigorous courses, what we've been referring to as a math team as stretching our students
Sure.
that could be stretched and placed in a higher math class, that may, those who may not have been placed in the past.
Okay.
Yes, the Orleans Hannah is still in place, although we're, we're looking, and Scott brought up the MAP testing, and the MAP system does assess on an algebra scale at certain levels, and we're looking at comparing over this year and next, how the Orleans Hannah is doing at predicting compared to how the MAP test scores are doing at predicting, because they're, why, why would we bother having an extra test if we can get the same information out of the MAP? And the Orleans Hannah is taken by a large number of sixth graders every year, but then also everybody that's in pre-algebra as seventh or eighth graders or ninth graders, we try to get the Orleans Hannah scores for those, because they're a good predictor of success in Algebra I, II.
I remember that test well. So thank you on that. So thinking about the MAP test, and I just got mine for my son, so is there the ability to tell us how children are doing compared to the state or to a national level, kind of like thinking about the CAT? And so the MAP, the data that I saw on my child's was just district data, and I kind of always want to know more, and so I was asking the teacher lots of questions, and I'm sure those are the kind of questions you get.
Absolutely. The MAP test is given, the MAP Growth Test, as they call it now, is given to approximately eighty-six million folks nationwide, as well as those in other countries. And so what they do is, based on how a student performs in their first testing of a given year, for us, it's spring, which is around the September timeframe, they're then placed in a cohort group with similar students who perform similar to how they did. Based on their performance on subsequent assessments, you'll see a change to their percentile group, and that's a national percentile group. And so it's based on that normative data that's very robust across the nation to show where our students are performing as a class, as a school, as a district, relative to those normative percentile groups.
So what we see on the MAP test is not necessarily just your school, it's the norm of the national group.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so that's really good to know. I think because it's new and everyone's trying to figure out, what does it mean? Yeah, it probably is good to have some kind of a coding guide to give out to teachers. So probably three years ago, we, I don't know if we voted, we decided that it was really important to have at the, at the secondary level, middle and high school math every day, and to have the ramp-up math classes. But I know we never quite got there. Is that part of what you were talking about in scheduling? And I know Mr. Evans brought, and it happened in September of 2013, and I can remember very well the conversations we had about the importance of ramp-up and what that would look like to be really effective, and how far are we in implementation of all that?
So yes, I'll have Susan come up, and she can expand on this, but one of the steps that Elliot Maron Bloom talked about was the RTI process, or what we're referring to as MTSSA, Multi-Tier System of Support for Academics, and how we can build in extra supports for math during the day for scheduling.
So, sorry. Actually, step three on both the high school and middle school schedule steps, we actually did take quite a bit of conversation on those days that we spent with high schools and... days that we spent with high schools and middle schools to really explore, what are they doing to help ensure that they are incorporating and putting teachers in the right classes, that they need to make sure that the right teachers are teaching the right courses? And also having conversations about how we are offering mathematics, how, how much are they offering mathematics? Where is it being placed? Are they offering Common Plan time so that there's time for teachers to collaborate and work together to do and take a look at some of those formative assessments and do some student review work? And also taking a look at, how are we going about offering those additional supports to the students? So while we've moved to math every day more at the middle level than at the high school level, some of the conversations we're having there are, what does that type of teaching look like? How are they going back to reteach and make sure that they're hitting any concerns that maybe something didn't happen well for that? How are they going back and making sure that it's happening in the classroom? Because we've also known from, from best practices that it really, that teaching needs to be happening in the classroom. The after-school support is nice, but really, being in the classroom with the teacher, getting the supports that they need to address is very important there as well. I don't know if that answered your question. But yes, we've been having some conversations. So step three, it's kind of hard to see because you don't have these, but we provided a series of bulleted questions that they need to be spending time talking with their leadership teams, curriculum specialists, on how they're going about and offering those types of Tier Two and Tier Three supports in their classrooms.
No, that's good. And I, I just remember back to Mr. Evans' comments and, and the impact that ramp-up has specifically at the algebra level, which is if, Algebra I, if you get it, then you get it. Otherwise, if you don't, you know, you don't tend to move on. And I've spent time this past year talking to math teachers at our high school levels at different schools. And I just think there's things we could do, like what you're doing, to help get us there. And I know that when math isn't taught every day, it's, it's a lot of concept.
Right.
And if it's not your, you know, if it's not something you love, and it's ingrained in your body, and you go to bed at night adding and subtracting, every day makes a big difference. And so I just want to, I just want to encourage us to get there. Because I just feel like, five years later, we're still not there.
We're definitely exploring that. And the other piece that you mentioned is in regards to the mindset and kind of taking a look at that. And that was part of the questioning that we were asking in regards to, because we do talk about students having that mindset when they go into a math classroom, and also teachers, and making sure that they're feeling comfortable in engaging students and addressing that as well.
And this is also an area where, when we ask other departments to come in and support, other departments may have to support us with this. There's only, so many periods within a day. And when you offer that, you have to have enough math teachers. We're going to be very strategic. But if you don't have the staffing to do that, then it's difficult to deliver that. So we, like Susan said, this is something that we've begun. The principals and their staff, they spent a lot of time having conversations, trying to figure out how to make it work. But it's also something we have to continue to have discussions around to support them with that as well.
What we know right now is, what we have done hasn't worked, so I'm not, this isn't option time to me. And I know I have limited influence, maybe, I don't know. If I need to be involved in those conversations, I think I've been pretty pointed and direct with how I feel about this issue. When only two out of our sixth grade levels show improvement, that's unacceptable. And so it's not acceptable, I'm not into exploring, I'm into figuring out how we're going to implement, not to be critical. I'm just, this is an area, unlike almost every other student success indicator, from graduation rates to a declining achievement gap to English Language Arts, we've shown great growth. This area has not. And so I want to just publicly state that I still see that as a critical, critical need. And I haven't said anything, because they've heard a lot from me already. And so I'm trying to, I want the opportunity for folks, but I want, and I'm happy to, work with our teacher task force, work with our principals, and pull this together, because it has to become implementation. And it has to change how we, what we teach and how we teach it. It has to change. Because if we do the same thing, we know what we're going to get. So I leave that as, just as a, a point of clarification, that we really, and I know, Melissa, and I'm not being critical, I know you're working really hard, and I know this, we've made great strides, but we can't allow it to get away from us and, in an effort to pull this together. I think, for example, when we talk about Algebra I, and we talk about where we're at, and the, the failure rates that we've looked at as well, because they've looked at a lot of data, they're also unacceptable. We know that if we move students into that class, we're creating an opening somewhere else. And so that means you go back and look at that schedule, because if we're creating an extra ramp-up class, that student was somewhere else before. That can be figured out. But we have to start making implementation strides next year. I mean, it's too late for this year for that. But that's really not, in my opinion, an option. And I'm happy to be a part of, I understand the challenge of schedules. I've, I've done scheduling, I've been a high school principal, I understand all those things. But I don't think we can move forward with the idea that this will come someday. Today's the day.
I appreciate that. And I can tell you that we are all very happy to hear that. And any principals watching are probably very happy to hear that. And we will be scheduling a meeting, and you will be invited.
I, I appreciate that from Mr. Evans, too.
I do, too.
And I know we've, we've been talking about this for a long time. And when I looked at those sixth grade test scores and saw that 10-point drop, I mean, that, that's just, you know, crazy. And we, I think, three years ago, I talked about, Tom, Tom Leitner is just a great guru at scheduling. And, and I specifically put my kids in a school where I knew math would be taught every day, for the simple reason that I wanted the repetitive instruction, did the same thing based on foreign language. But there are other classes that should be double-blocked, things like AP Physics and things like that. So there are really good ways to look at instruction, and, and it can be done. Because I've seen it done in buildings and done really, really well. And if we have to go hire more math teachers, and we have to figure out something to get that done, then we, as a board, need to step up and, and do that. Because this is a pretty, I mean, this is pretty bad. And so I think we know that. So I appreciate you coming forward with this.
So thank you. We greatly appreciate that. That is a huge amount of support to us, so thank you.
Mr. Smith?
I wanted to know, is there, or can there be a cross-sectional evaluation done, or baseline, that will tell us, once the math scores increased, it impacted the science scores as well? And also, will you be able to look at the school climate and the behaviors of students improving after they can sit in the class and they understand, and they don't have those, those acting out to try to get kicked out of that math class because they know what's coming up?
Yes, we do a variety of data analysis throughout the year, all of which you just described, whether it be the math scores, the science scores, the reading scores, but also climate survey results, MAP data, all of that, yes. So that's, that is one thing that we have added, is, and that was why we had some slides around attendance, because there are a multitude of reasons as to why students succeed, and we need to ensure that all of those pieces are in place.
And this will include tracking AP and honor class enrollment as well?
Yes. In fact, we have a committee working, we're calling it the Early Entrance to College right now. And our goal is to create a pathway for every student where they can earn 15 college credit hours when they graduate. And those pathways are CTE, dual enrollment, honors, AP, and IB. So that committee met one time, and they, I believe, are meeting this week or next week as well.
Mr. Promet?
Well, while everyone was talking, I was just looking at some statistics, and I, but I think we have to get some, some things re-verified, because the Nebraska Department of Education has the 11th grade math score proficiencies for Omaha Public Schools, it's going from basically the low to mid-30s proficient from 12, 2012 to 2015, but in 2016, 2017, it jumped from 35% proficient to 64% proficient. And that's on the Department of Education's website. So I'll obviously need to double-check that, because that would be an absolutely amazing increase, but...
That doesn't sound right.
No, it doesn't. It doesn't sound right.